All right, we'll call this meeting open at 8:28 PM. Yes, all right, let's go on to the adoption of the agenda. Let's move on to changes if we may. Mr. Mayor, I'd have an item that I would request to have deferred. Yes, seconded, Councillor Sima, yes, seconded? An item to be deferred, and this deferred item will be added on to the next agenda. Fine then. All right. So this item refers to a petition. Let's go on now to notice of motion, none? Comments, questions, period, none? Report from the United Counties of Prescott-Russell? I didn't think you had any more questions left there, you're, I see you standing up, but we're past the question period. Well, we were very glad to welcome the ambulance attendants, she's the first shovel full of dirt that was dug out of the ground to inaugurate the new fire station or ambulance station. Mr. Mayor, did we talk about Highway 17 quite recently? No. Well, the $40 million that was voted. Apparently, we'd spoken to Mrs. Lallande about this, and apparently, this is in the books. Could it be possible at the next United Counties of Prescott-Russell meeting, Mr. Mayor, if you could ask them if they are willing to proceed with this project right up to Kennan Road? Fine. Folks are complaining that it takes them an hour and a half to get to Ottawa, when it's nice outside and it's not raining. Well, if you're living in Orleans, well, if you're living in Canada, it might take you an hour and a half. Mr. Mayor, the United Counties of Prescott-Russell, you had occasion to take a decision concerning ambulances, and you might share the decision that the counties took? Well, there's a legal aspect to this. I did not request that publicity be stopped. We'd want to impact our relationship with our neighbours, given the decisions they've But we don't want, of course, to say anything in the local media. It might rub our neighbours the wrong way, given the upcoming municipal elections. But we don't need to only blame our neighbours, but also the ministry. The ministry is the one that modified the directives, and the ministry has done nothing. The minister was replaced by a new individual, Dr. Hoskins, I believe, and the ministry people was totally aware of the situation. They did not utter a word. The new lady that had been named did not know what was going on. It was insulting, really. We'll see if the new government will do anything concerning what's going to happen with the new elections. We'll make use of laws that are being made use of elsewhere, and we'll see what happens, whether the ministry will move or not. Only time will tell. Question here, Mr. Mayor, when is the time limit that is imposed upon us to consider budgetary items that would impact the counties? Well, the new council will decide upon budgetary matters, I believe, but still, counties will continue to function? No, they'll be working under the same constraints as we will be working under. It's because I had an item to refer you to, that's why. Well, if it was a small item, then we could certainly deal with it. Well, I'll speak to you about this later. Mr. Mayor, Highway 17 at the corner of Edwards and Highway 17, yes, this will be fixed. A truck went by there, I thought it was going to overturn. Yes, I spoke to Ms. Clermont about this, it's going to be fixed this summer. Let's go on now to the amendment concerning the dog bylaw. The Committee of the Hall recommends that council consider the adoption of an amendment to the current dog bylaw at its next regular meeting in order to allow three dogs per households, plus any service dog that may be clinically assigned to a person living in that household, and to allow five service dogs in training, and further allowing rescue centres to have up to 20 dogs in its care as the dogs transition to new homes. Questions? Councillor Bellinget?
Listen questions to you, by email? You didn't receive it?
That's the one that you put all of us on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. I thought, well, do you want me to read?
I said never.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad to refuse.
Look, right after the last meeting, I said you, I said you questions ahead of time. Regarding the bylaw, current bylaw reads, section 10 reads, "No person shall keep or allow to be kept in residential zone of the corporation more than three dogs." The proposed amendment seeks to add, simply add, section 10.1, "Medical service dogs shall not be calculated with the set limit, and that number of medical service dogs shall be set for maximum of five." At first, I think we need to better define what a residential zone is, and perhaps revising that to say in a domicile in a residential zone? Second, if we're going to allow theoretically up to eight dogs in a domicile, I think we need to distinguish between types of domiciles. There's a world of difference between keeping several dogs in a one-bedroom condominium at a four-bedroom detached home with a large yard. I think for any quantity more than one dog, the requirement should stipulate that the domicile must have a fence yard and include at least something like 30 square meters of outdoor space per dog kept there. Next, there's the question of the kennel rescue centre allowance. The definition of kennel in the current bylaw only stipulates that it must be registered, no mention of how much space land area it has, and there's no definition of rescue centre. So I think we have to be careful that we don't create a situation where anybody can call themselves a rescue centre, and suddenly there are multiple homes in Clarence Ropman with upwards of 20 dogs. Both kennels and rescue centres should be defined as large properties, preferably rural, again with a certain minimum square meters of enclosed yard per animal.
I believe in the bylaw does stipulate, but there has to be a certain amount of acreage.
The bylaw was attached to it, and I didn't see that anywhere in the definition.
Because that's why she had to come, her one of her...
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, when I wrote this report, a request had been made by a member of the public, and at that time, we did not have a manager of bylaw services. Since that time, I've handed the file to Mr. Leroy. He has briefed himself and prepared himself to see me answer your questions. So we can maybe start with Mr. Bellinget's few questions, and...
Mr. Leroy?
Mr. Mayor, I do understand that falls within the category of a kennel definition. There's a certain amount of zoning that falls within the hobby farm definition that would allow to, an individual to operate a kennel of the size that is stipulated in the bylaw. We're not dealing here about just a small, specific location, and to keep only one dog, but they state a rescue centre, they say rescue centre, they say they can have up to 20 dogs. Well, it really has to be a designated location. Not anyone can be, or not any, not any building can be designed as a rescue centre. You need provincial documents stipulating that you operate as such. I know that we've worked side by side with the Freedom Dog Rescue Association, and they need a licence issued by the City of Clansay in Rockland. Yes, and there, we're talking about a designated location. They have to be recognised. Now, we have to carry out inspections concerning this, and the government states that it's clear that the municipality work with recognised associations, and not just working willy-nilly with individuals that proclaim or declare themselves as being dog rescue officials. Can we specify this in the bylaw? Yes, most definitely, there may, it might be wise to have a clearer definition or more specifications concerning this. Another question, there are residences that will allow up to eight dogs. Well, the way in which the bylaws are written state that service dogs are defined under a different category. I understand what people are getting at when they deal with service dogs or allude to service dogs. This is something that is not entirely new. There are some parts in Ontario where the Accessibility for Ontarians and Disabilities Act has a section that deals with service animals, and Toronto has accessed that, that part of the act to implement some measures. This is not new. This is not a new practice, and we adapt to these, to new rules and regulations. We have to be aware of the needs of animals, and some dogs fall under some categories, other dogs fall under the service dog category. You understand, though, that if an apartment building has a right to have, well, you see, it's not just anyone that can keep so many dogs, they have to be licensed. But still, if you're talking about three dogs, and if another individual has a service dog over on top of that amount, that, you know, we wind up with four dogs in one apartment. Well, the concern is, if you're not registered to have service dogs, that's a concern, but if you're not properly located to operate a residence, or to own a residence in an area where it is stipulated that you may have that number of dogs, then that's fine. I believe you're referring to extreme cases here, cases here where you would not be allowed to have more than five, and train them for service dogs, train them as service dogs, should I say. I believe that if someone has a personal residence, if that individual wishes to have three dogs, as long as he has sufficient yardage, that's fine. The onus is not upon us to decide how many dogs are to be kept here, there, or anywhere, but when we're talking about dogs in training or service dogs, then they're governed under certain regulations. But you can have two or three training dogs in your home, plus other dogs. Well, you need to be recognised by an approved organisation that states that the dogs you are training will be assigned to those in need. There are three to five throughout Canada that are authorised to train service dogs. There is one of those that is located within the confines of our municipality, and it also depends on the dogs. Any other questions then? No, I'm in agreement with Mr. Bellinget. We need to clearly define what a training dog is, and you need these properties, sufficient size of property to accommodate them. So if you have eight dogs, and you have five dogs in training, you need a certain land size to accommodate this. For example, it's in the Moore's Division, in the Moore's Development, that might be something we could look seriously into. Well, I was looking into this situation, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, for one to be compelled to house 20 dogs at one particular location, and if it's a rescue centre, there's a dog here, there, and everywhere, and they bark continuously all day, and those that are lost and wandering in the middle of the roadway, they, they're even noisier then. I'm in agreement that this type of sample would be set up either in the middle of the woods, or somewhere in the countryside. Well, we'd have to designate how much acreage is involved, how much space. I phoned up the kennels in our area, for example, and the Burgeet based kennel states that he had, the Enos States owner states that he had to meet some criteria, and he referred to, he stated to Mr. Dishon, one of our employees, that some people also pick up errant dogs. There's no one who wishes to have, you know, a shelter that will shelter 20 dogs. No one wants this. Well, we could all shelter them in the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena. I needed to get that out of my system, what can I say?
Yes, Mr. Leroy, I believe, had a comment. Well, Mr. Mayor, I wish to specify that you need a licence so that a centre be designated as a training centre, located in an area where it is conducive to have such operations that are ongoing. It's important to have this done right the first time, because you can't be confronted with someone that complains to council. We have to get this right. Yes, it's a sensitive area, I agree. I just want to make sure that we're not approving anything that all of a sudden, we're going to have to change midway. Any other questions then? All those in favour? It's going to come back. This item is going to come back before us at the regular meeting of Town Council, because we're discussing this as the Committee of the Hall, and modifications might be brought to it in the meantime, within the next two weeks. Are you in agreement with any modifications? Well, Mr. Mayor, we'd have to entertain a motion that would be seconded to defer this to the further regular meeting of council in two weeks from now. Let's defer it then, at the next Committee of the Hall meeting, because of course, it won't be enacted this year. What we can deal with at the next regular meeting of Town Council, we'd have two weeks left to make necessary adjustments. If, Mr. Leroy, you have sufficient time to make the necessary judgments, then we can deal with it at the next regular meeting of Town Council. It would be implemented this year. If not, if we defer it at the next year. If we pass it this year, if not, we'll pass it next time. Well, this is not a financial decision. Well, you, we won't have another meeting much before August. So put in the changes that need to be put in, and if you don't have sufficient time, then we'll deal with it in August. And if changes are not, are not brought to it, we'll deal with them in August. Let's go on now to purchase and installation of a level two charging station for City Everyone's in agreement, by the way, with the previous recommendation? Fine. Everyone's in agreement? Yes, 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 with modifications to be brought to the training dog provision of this bylaw. All right, let's go on now to the next item. The Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves the purchase and installation of a level two charging station at City Hall in Rockland, and be it further resolved that the Committee of the Hall hereby recommends that council authorise the transfer of $2,700 from the Building Reserve Fund to the operating budget for the purchase and installation of an electric vehicle charging station. Moved by Councillor Zant, seconded by? Well, moved by Councillor Lallande, seconded by Councillor Zant, that's fine. So, Councillor Lallande, you're first at bed. Now, this deals with the employees strictly. There are no trucks owned by the City of Clansay in Rockland that will be plugged into this charging station. Yes, mostly, this is something that's going to be advertised here, there, and everywhere, and it's for the visitors' use. It costs about $2.50 per hour. Someone told us that this is the benefit they receive that is taxable. Well, look, at $2, are we going to issue T forward slips for every hour of use at $2.50, let's say? Well, if they're plugged at, to the, if they're plugged in for four hours every day, then that amounts to about $10. If it's a level one charging station, it doesn't cost as much, but I would see this charging station be set up at the YMCA, where there's a lot more foot traffic and car traffic. Let's keep the level one charging station at Town Hall, and let's install the level two charging station at a more public place. People may have, may have a copy, a coffee, you know, they might walk through Simo Park and wander around the downtown core. If we are to, you know, put all of those charging stations within only one location, it might not serve us well. I agree with what has just been stated. I wouldn't set it up at the YMCA, though, I would set it up at the Giant Tiger, maybe somewhere along Main Street. I'm ready to have administration decide where this new charging station would be set up. But if we install it at the Town Hall, Town Hall employees are quickly going to plug themselves into this. There's already one at the Saint-Tropez Barbecue establishment, if some would be installed here, there, and everywhere, even close to the church or close to restaurants. Of course, we could, I know someone that sits on the church committee, who'd certainly be interested in having a charging station close by. He takes care of the, of ringing the bells, or... Councillor Sima, we're going to offer this service free of charge, but at the Saint-Tropez Barbecue place, they pay to make use of this. We pay for gas, why would we, why would we have to pay this free of charge? Could we not, you know, request maybe a dollar or two? People would put into a slot with a timer attached? Well, in fact, Mr. Mayor, a level two charging station, if we don't rely upon grants given to us by the province, well, we are then allowed to charge something to those plugged in. If we go along with the option that was discussed at the Committee of the Environment, where we would put in a charging station that is subject to government grants, then we would not be in a position to charge to individuals. We chose to implement the option that would have us put up a charging station that would not be subject to grants. Well, it must be, it would be better to put it up close to a building, or close to Town In any event, or, you know, operate it with a credit card, or something like that.
Have we calculated?
Well, the difference between both options, let's say, the Committee of the Environment option would cost us $400 more than if we had a grant from the government. However, we can charge, we can repay the $400 extra, we can also decide where we'll install this charging station, and decide as to who's going to make use of this charging station. We don't know how much time it's going to take for us to get our money back, but we can certainly charge the use of this charging station back to the public who makes use of this. If we, yes. There are charging stations with associated costs, I know that. Mr. Lallande, the idea is quite laudable, but it, we're not targeting the right spot here. On Laurier Street, well, charging stations put up on Laurier Street would give it this added dimension for those who wish to, you know, shop at the, or to patronise restaurants, or purchase some goods at the pharmacy. We might consider maybe putting up a charging station close to where the church is located, and we'll determine whether the church people want to have a charging station beforehand, and then we could move along if they are willing to have one installed close by. So employees make use of charging stations? Yes, we can determine whether or not the church is interested in making use of this charging station. Let's say that we could pick Town Hall, the Town Hall venue, as a second choice. We could initiate an agreement, or enter into an agreement with the church if it needs be. Mr. Leonard? Well, for purposes of electrical services and servicing, we might consider other sites other than the one that is now proposed. Well, the committee can look into this and come back with a decision to council. If it's underground, and... Let's have the department, our department folks come up with a proper location, maybe in the downtown core, centred in the downtown core. Let's not give it to the, give this mandate to the Committee of the Environment, but maybe in the resolution? Modify the text to state that the location be recommended by the department. Fine, all those in favour, carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to a tree cutting bylaw that needs to be adopted. Mrs. Mala, Mrs. Sima?
Whereas the United Counties of Prescott-Russell have recently adopted a bylaw delegating the authority to municipalities to pass a bylaw regulating the destruction of damage of trees and woodlands, and whereas section eight of the tree cutting bylaw places an undue burden on farmers who seek to clear cut the woodlands on their properties for the purpose of cultivating the land, as it requires that an environmental impact assessment be completed, that the Committee of the Hall recommend that council adopts the newly proposed tree cutting bylaw being annex one of report number AME-18-14-R, which basically contains the same wording as the existing bylaw number 2015-0102, with the exception of section eight, which has been deleted in its entirety, and a clause that makes reference to the delegated authority of the United Counties of Prescott-Russell has been added.
Seconded by Councillor Bellinget, any questions? Why, why do we pinpoint a particular property to a, to a, states that the provisions of this bylaw shall prohibit trees located any part of vacant property along Laurier Road? We list, why do we list those specific roads?
You got Saint Pascal, or...
Yeah, well, it's the downtown core.
They still live on the main street, that's why. The village core. You have to leave your house once in a while, and come and see what it looks like.
So if you're not on one of those roads, you can, but you don't have to...
A vacant lot, you can still clear that, if you're not on one of those roads.
It's something we'll have to review when we come back from...
I don't know why, but why did we, how did we do this?
This was a bylaw that was established before, a few years ago.
Really, our bylaw did not stand, we didn't have the authority to enforce it, because the counties were overseeing it. It was given back to us for implementation, and so we're dealing with it. All those in favour then? Carried, thank you. Information Technology Work Plan, Councillor Zant, that report FIN 2018-021 outlining the information technology work plan be received for information purposes. Seconded by Councillor Lallande, Councillor Grimar. I liked the report's quality, really. It was quite clear where we were heading if we decided to head in that direction. I took a look at the priorities outline, and it did align with our previous comments. The report was easy to read, and we know where people are heading now. Yes, Mr. Leroy, you did a tremendous job with this, did a good job with this. Yes, or was it Mr. Keigho? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Other questions? Councillor Lallande?
Myself and Dave, we went to Toronto with the Smart Cities Conference, and one of the main themes, Dave and I both agree, was, you know, cybersecurity and everything like that. So what we also noticed is that... So what we also noticed is that a lot of municipalities already are way ahead of us in all of these things. So instead of trying to reinvent the wheel and everything, there are actually cities who, like bigger cities than us, who actually outsource their programs, their services. So basically municipal service is a municipal service in Ontario, it doesn't, you know, if you're dealing with the fire, fire stuff, the same thing applies. So if you're going to be dealing with data, we don't have to come up with new systems on our own, we can look at other cities to perhaps purchase programs and adapt them to our needs. So I just wanted to throw it out there.
Council?
Other questions, all those in favor, carried then. Let's go on now to the next item, amendment to the signed bylaw, Councilor Lallon. Committee of the Hall recommends that council approve bylaw 2018-67 being a bylaw to amend the signed bylaw 2015-160. Seconded by Mrs. Simar, any questions? This is a bylaw that will allow service organizations and registered nonprofit organizations and churches to have signage put up, not necessarily in front of their offices or venues. Well, I know that Mister Roy has just stepped in, I might have a question here, but there are new businesses that only have signage in English. For example, there's a flea market operating that has signage only in English and it states, there's a big banner that states flea market only. We have a bylaw that states that signage has to be in both languages and that French should be the primary language in the signage. We are Francophone city and we need to maintain this type of heritage. Any other questions, all those in favor, carried then, well, that's fine. Let's go on now to amendment to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Oh, no, you skipped over one, Monsieur Mayor, item nine point six. Evaluation process for heritage sign requests. Well, we just dealt with that, no, no. We dealt with nine point five. I'm sorry, I'm, I, I jumped the gun. Let's go on now to the item nine point five, or nine, evaluation process for heritage sign requests. Monsieur Mayor, the Committee of the Hall recommends to council that the Heritage Advisory Committee be responsible to evaluate the requests for the installation of signs and plaques to commemorate members of the city that had an influence on the community and that the director of the Infrastructure and Planning Department be the approval authority for the approval of those types of requests based on the recommendations of the Heritage Advisory Committee and that the budget for the Heritage Advisory Committee be used to pay for those requests. Seconded by Councilor Levaire, questions, all those in favor, carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to the amendment to the Environmental Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Councilor Grimar, the Committee of the Hall recommends that council adopts a bylaw to amend the Environmental Advisory Committee Terms of Reference in order to add the fact that the committee serves as a liaison committee for the municipal landfill site and also to reduce the number of municipal councillors to be adopted to this, or appointed to this committee to one instead of two. Seconded by Councilor Zant, questions? Is there a provincial law that determines the number of meetings that Advisory Environmental Committee needs to hold each and every year? Or are there no regulations that govern this? Mister Leonard, you might come back to us. Mrs. Collier? I'd just like to indicate to you that I'm the one that prepared the report in consultation with Mister Lompray who's now on vacation, but it's in keeping with the certificate of approval requirements dealing with the landfill site. We need to have a, an environmental advisory committee. I didn't see anywhere where we needed to hold a certain amount of meetings per year. So it, a meeting could be called, given, in, in reaction to something that's happening, for example. For example, it's, it would be unwise to call a meeting that would only last about fifteen or so minutes. We need to be as efficient as can be. The frequency of, or the rate of meetings is defined as being four times per year. Well, if we have no regulations governing this, can we put in a paragraph stating who's responsible and if there is, there is meeting to be called, that thereby it may be about four or five items considered before it may be considered as being urgent? I believe that the terms of reference refer to four meetings per year, I should have forwarded this to you. It stands to reason that there is nothing to be debated, there would be no meetings held. We might target the minimum of two meetings, a minimum of two meetings per year, four if necessary. The terms of reference state four, I would move that it be reduced to two as a minimum if and when required. So we could add to the initial recommendation, reduced to two meetings per year or as situations dictate. All those in favor, by the way? That goes hand in hand with the Ernie Hurdman bill. It was adopted in second reading but not third reading and all bills have now fallen to the wayside because of the new election. Let's go on now to the purchase and installation of a generator. Councilor Lallon, yes, Mister Mayor? The Committee of the Hall recommends that council adopts a bylaw to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract with La Marche Electric Inc. for the purchase and installation of two standby generators for an amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars excluding HST. Seconded by Councilor Lallon, all those in favor? Oh, what was the budget earmarked for this particular purchase? Well, the report sets it out, sir. If you take a look at the report, it sets it out. I see. All right, well, that's fine, that's fine, 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 fine. The award letter alludes to a particular amount but does not allude to two generators. Am I mistaken here? Well, one at the Clarence Creek Arena and one at the municipal garage. Where do you see this? Well, it's under item one now therefore. No, I'm referring to the award letter, Mister Mayor. Yeah, he's right, Mister Mayor, because it's, it's not spelled out in the letter really. The amount is not spelled out. Two standby generators. Okay, okay, all right, right, I stand corrected, it's in there. You, you, you do see it now, do you not, Councilor Levaire? Yes, I do see it quite clearly. We can print it out in larger block letters next time around for you. All right then, all those in favor, let's go on. Next item, replacement of a culvert on Baseline Road. Mrs. Simar, the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a contract with Sinex, construction limited for the replacement of a culvert on Baseline Road in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred, or seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents excluding HST. Seconded by Councilor Lallon, Andre, questions? How many culverts are we scheduled to replace this year? Do we know? Three or four? I believe there are three in Hammond right now. There are some to be replaced around the Saint Felix area, at least ten or so, here, there and everywhere. Of course, we, did we ever think about putting all of these projects under one budgetary or one tender envelope and instead of resorting to five calls to tender, only resort to one call to tender for the replacement of all culverts? We'd be dealing with only one company, the equipment would be in place, it would cost us much less and I believe that with a properly drawn up contract, things would go rather smoothly. Well, what we have to consider is that, especially when we're dealing with two or three relatively closely located culverts, we're always dealing with the same contractor and we always deal with one particular engineer, dealing with technical aspects of a particular project. But given the number of sites that needed to be serviced, it was not feasible for us to deal with only one contractor. We, so what you're saying is that to replace five culverts, there's not one company that you can deal with that might be able to replace five culverts? Yes, it would be possible, but in this case, no, because some culverts are considered as bridges, you see in some instances. It entails a lot of work, especially around the Hammond area. I understand, but what, if we can't do it in this particular instance, that's fine, but if, if we can in others, fine, let's go on. Let's go on now to the renewal of the agreement with the Ludwig Bus Lines for Roads 530 and 535. Councilor Lallon, that's one of your buses. Whereas the Public Transit Advisory Committee supports the recommendation of the community services and recommends to municipal council to proceed with a renewal agreement with Ludwig Bus Lines for the transport services for the Route 6, 530 Clarence Creek and Rockland towards Ottawa, Gatineau and Route 535 Saint Pascal, Bourget, Hammond, Chennie to Ottawa and Gatineau. That municipal council hereby mandates the community services to proceed with their renewal agreement for one additional year with a fixed increment of three percent as stipulated in the agreement of August, August 22nd, 2016 with Ludwig Bus Lines for the services of public transit and be resolved that this agreement be prepared by the community services in order that the signed agreement be effective as of September 1st, 2018. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Mister Jubinville, if the service stops at Ogilvy, then our buses won't stop there, will they? Well, Mister Mayor, I don't have an exact answer as to that. We'd need to have a clause to cover ourselves, we don't need to pay all year round if we don't, if we're not required to travel right up to Gatineau, for example. Well, the contract that was set with, that was agreed upon with Mister Ludwig, well, look, if we've entered into a contract that has us go to Gatineau also and we're not allowed to go to Gatineau, will we apply the proper adjustments? Yes. We have the right to remove buses from given roads if we're not allowed to travel there. Mister Mayor, when the light rail service, will the transit way be open for buses or will it be closed for cars as well as buses? Well, we're in the process of looking into this at present, since we're dealing with the city of Ottawa here, I can't give you any answer as to that, but the contract is drawn up to be advantageous for us. Here at the city of Clarence and Rockland, we can modify what we wish to and we can adjust the bus runs and adjust the pricing in keeping with this. Fine, all those in favor, carried then. Let's go on now to engineering guidelines. Councilor Bellinget, the Committee of the Hall, Mister Mayor recommends that council approves engineering guidelines attached to report INF 2018-033. Seconded by, I'll second this, Mister Mayor. Again, a very nicely prepared document, Mister Leonard. Mister Leonard, you don't get compliments like this all that often, you might as well take it with a smile on your face. Councilor Zant? Just a question because it's a fairly lengthy report. When we're dealing with guidelines here and when we're dealing with percentages, does this report allude to percentages? Yes, it does. Are there specifications attached to the height that a development will have? For example, we have many developments that are ongoing on top of a given hill at present. We're talking about the top, the crest of the hill. Now, if, whoop, I'm completely lost in my, in my chain of thought here because I have four or five things buzzing in my head at the same time, I apologize. Just, just come out with one thing at a time. I, I have many points to bring to your attention, but I don't know how to come up with it.
How exactly, how exactly is this going to work? Does it have anything to do with elevations when you're talking about these kind of things?
Well, Mister Mayor, there's a component that has to do with grading, that has to do with drainage, all of those have, have an impact on elevations, or elevations have an impact on that.
Well, not the height of the buildings though.
Sorry, so, so these are engineering guidelines, they're, they're geared to inform staff and the development community how develop, or not develop, but how infrastructure should be built and so drainage is a part of that, stormwater management and all that is a part of those design guidelines?
But I think maybe I'm throwing something out there.
Oh, please do.
The higher elevation will then have the same rules as, let's say, at lower elevations where, let's say, your storm water would be different.
So these apply, like, stormwater management applies regardless of the elevation and these apply, it's a guide, it's a guideline, so they're engineering standards that are supported by a guideline and so they are always, I guess, used in consideration based on the side and development and all that stuff. However, these are the typical drawings that is, it creates the expectation so developers know how to submit, they know what engineering infrastructures, how to engineer their infrastructure and also direct staff how to review and how to make sure that infrastructure is built accordingly.
I'd just like to thank our town clerk, it's a hundred and forty-four page report, but she reduced it quite well for us.
The same as this is pertaining because there are different elevations, there are different grades, there are different everything when you're building something. You can't just say everyone is going to fall under the standards without having some exceptions.
So that's why, that's why these are guidelines, so they are to be, I mean, a guideline is made to be shaped, so, and it's made to be used and to have, I guess, to use the best, how can I say this? They're, I mean, they're a standard that we should try to achieve, build towards. They give guidance to the development community, but they, they are guidelines, so I'm not quite sure.
So they're not enforceable, basically if somebody with, well, they're guidelines?
Well, they're enforceable through the site plan. So what happens is that we're going to, we're going to recommend or we're going to ask developers to provide a site plan that respects these guidelines. However, we can use our best judgment if some of these do not apply. The majority of developments, this will apply.
Okay, so if I'm specifically talking about, am I allowed to name a development here? Okay, I'm specifically talking about Kiam's development at the top of Caron. Do you think that, that this plan actually applies to them, knowing that they're on top of the hill in Rockland versus, let's say, at the bottom, or that would be more problematic?
Yeah, it does, and I think.
So if you could explain why, that's what I'm asking.
Well, okay, so, we're using, we're using these guidelines to explain something that I don't think is the appropriate way to explain it, but we'll, we'll try to explain it through the guidelines. This case in particular that you're referring to, there is a drainage requirement that we, that we have expressed that they need to meet and supported by our guidelines, supported by other guidelines in other municipalities and it's the, I'd say, it's the standard practice. And so.
So does the stage five of Moore's Village have to do the same thing because they're lower?
Yeah. So in this particular case we are referencing, yes. Some other standards we can, if it's not suitable, to request them, have a, revise that the standard is required. But in this case, this particular case you're talking about, that needs to apply. It's a drainage issue. We're talking about major overland flow routes, major land overflow flow routes need to be directed towards an acceptable outlet, regardless of the elevation, regardless of where the development occurs, regardless of site specifics.
I'd like to ask the developer to explain this further. Before I take a decision, I'd like to understand both sides. Could it be possible? Mr. Bellanguet had a question beforehand.
You're asking if this report addresses topography of the city?
Section 8.3 of the report.
Well, topography, you know, elevation, that's called topography.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that would be more addressed with your overall master plan, sort of your water drainage systems, where you want to put residential zones, where you want to put water drainage areas, where you want to put your streams.
I understand.
It's overall planning. I think this is specific to each project, your design guides by subdivision where something else is already decided that topography, that elevation.
And I just want to know if we have the flexibility to exempt certain developments based on topography?
But that would be another report. I think that would be when we can remaster plan and sit down, when zones can approve for subdivisions.
So that's why I'd like to hear from the developer.
You okay, Adam? You've got anything else you want to add, Monsieur Leonard?
Yes, if you want to hear from the developer, I think you better understand what the issue is.
Okay.
Well, we just, we need both sides, so I just, I want to understand a little bit more. That's all.
Fine. Well, thank you for allowing me to address the drainage issue. I have Ryan from McIntosh Perry who'll explain to you a tad bit more the technical aspect of things. What we need to meet specifications-wise is what the Ministry of the Environment requires us to meet. We have to meet the onslaught of a 100-year rainfall. We had to also implement a stress test to ensure that we could control this 100-year well. Ryan came out with a minimum of 10 projects throughout the city of Ottawa, came out with the guidelines, but were not in the city of Ottawa, Mr. Klemm. But often, the city of Ottawa is used as a benchmark for being the strictest city. How much water does the city of Ottawa, untreated water, does the city of Ottawa send to the river? But is there a bylaw, however, Mr. Mayor, that compels us to come up with more of a, than a 100-year well? Is there a Clarence Rockland bylaw that compels us to respect some stricter measures, Mr. Leonard? Well, in fact, look, our bylaws, as they stand right now, and as stated in the report, are due to be revised, and this is why we've come up with this new bylaw, in absence of functional bylaws that we're lacking at present. We base ourselves on what the city of Ottawa criteria state with regard to drainage matters. Drainage is a complicated field. A lot of people have PhDs in drainage studies, but there are requirements that stipulate that you have to control the flow of water. And there are two components that impact you. One minor occurrence that would impact your site every five years, and one major one that would impact your site every 100 years. Mr. Klemm's plan deals with this quite well, but anything over and above 100-year, the 100-year criteria, they don't need to control. All they need is to ensure that they have an adequate outlet, and they define an adequate outlet. And the municipal infrastructure is considered adequate. Drainage easement is considered as being adequate. A creek, a ditch, all of these are considered as being adequate. What is not considered as an adequate outlet is a private, is private property. In this case, everything that goes over and beyond the 100-year threshold will drain over to neighboring properties. What happens is that once everything's been developed and once we've developed everything, the city of Clarence and Rockland incurs a risk. If we adopt the project, the one which is proposed, and if there's a drainage problem, we have to attempt to mediate in between two owners because people will have purchased homes on the developed properties. We try, we'll have to negotiate between two properties and try to remedy problems after the fact. What we are recommending is to have an over, major overland path that's directed towards an acceptable outlet. And that's contained within the city of Ottawa's guidelines and is adopted by the Ministry of Environment. This impacts all developments throughout Clarence and Rockland. Development close to this particular development on Caron Street, those are rental apartment buildings, and they had to raise the level of their property to ensure positive drainage to meet criterias over and above the 100-year threshold. This also impacts the subdivision with regard to the Arnold Crossing area and others. This is common practice. In this particular case, options are quite limited for Mr. Klemm, but the fact remains that this is what we recommend. Let's not forget that our role is to ensure or try to ensure in any event that the city of Clarence and Rockland's interests are best served or are well-served in this instance. If the city of Clarence and Rockland accepts to negotiate with a certain level of risk, I don't recommend that you do this, well, we might be caught up in another flood-related situation. You know, we're dealing with the natural disaster that would impact drainage, the drainage situation. Given the last flood, we were the victims, us, of course, we had a lot of problems with the drainage level. But now that we have reports stipulating 56 or so conditions, well, I don't fully understand. All clauses, clauses were asked to vote on this report. I find it difficult to accept this report. Well, it's, this will have been adopted by the planning committee before going forward. It's a, it's a site line matter where we deal with engineering matters, drainage matters. That's the reason why it was not part and parcel of the 50 or so conditions. We have to be careful when dealing with 100-year wells or events. This is not something that will occur all that often. The city of Houston, for example, went through three 120-year events, one year after the other. They were impacted by this. Now, if this event occurs within the municipality of Clarence and Rockland, the municipality has to step in and, you know, settle or mediate conflicts in between residents. The developer will not be responsible to correct the problem then, but the onus will be upon the municipality and the residents to correct problems. I would like to add something. I understand what Councilor Guimaraes has stated, and I understand the criteria that you're making use of, and I thank you for clearing matters up. But do we, are we also given to understand, in this case, it's Mr. Klemm, each and every time, each and every occasion that he's ready to put in a pin in the ground, we're coming up and putting a halt to his process, and we have to make sure that he adheres to those criteria? Well, Mr. Mayor, it's, there's a procedural order that we need to respect. We need to, to deal with the planning committee that exercises supervisory role. There's no decision that's taken at that point in time. The developer runs a risk in going ahead with this project without the okay of the planning department. And if our engineering department adds additional conditions, then his original engineering plans will not, will be deemed to have been unapproved. A draft plan is initially approved, and then the engineering specs are implemented. So you recently negotiated a draft plan. Now we're tackling grading and engineering matters. These are site plan conditions that were funneled over to Mr. Klemm and his consultant. We performed inspections in record time to accommodate them time-wise, but this is the process that we need to follow. Can I add something to all of this? We're dealing here with an interpretation of the act. We have a divergence of opinions with regards to our interpretation. That's why I brought Ryan from McIntosh Perry to give you his version of facts. Well, as was stated, once your development is over and done with, we're caught with it, and you're gone. But if we've ever encountered a drainage problem... Yeah, well, we've never encountered 100-year storm circumstance before. Yes, but we've added a probable, an additional 20% probability rate on top of that. This is accepted by the city of Ottawa. Maybe the city of Clarence and Rockland has a different way of seeing things. That's why I would like to have Ryan explain to you what this difference in interpretation is. If other developers did not criticize or never objected to this, that's fine. But according to us, we proceeded properly, and I would have our consultant speak. Mr. Leonard? Well, there are a lot of municipal developments. We can set foot in many municipalities and deal with different circumstances. Our municipality has its own drainage problems. I believe that each individual members of council are aware of particular problems inherent to our municipality. But the question that we should ask ourselves is this: are members of town council ready to take on a new level of risk? There are chances that an event of that type might occur or not, flooding of that type, for example. But in fact, the question is this: is town council ready to tackle this level of risk? Councilor Zant? Well, if we were to have things stay the way they are, could we not look upon matters that might come up for consideration on a case-by-case basis? Well, according to me, I meet the criteria set out by the Ministry of Environment, set out to me by the Ministry of the Environment. We entered into a discussion with them, and we met their specifications. This is just a difference of opinion that we have with regard to a bylaw that we need to adhere to. Mr. Leonard has his opinion, we have our opinion, and we say that we've met the criteria. But Mr. Leonard has proof that shores up our way of depressing, interpreting. I'm not asking for any exceptions here or, you know, well, it has to go to the planning committee. Mr. Leonard? Well, Mr. Mayor, I want this to be quite clear in everyone's mind. We're not dealing with a difference of interpretation. We're talking about two different things. We're talking about controlling the flow of water. Mr. Klemm refers to controlling water, 100-plus-year occurrence. The Ministry of Environment recommends that he should follow the conditions. What he doesn't respect is the conditions where he has to direct his water towards an acceptable outlet, given a 100-year-plus occurrence that would manifest itself. He has to direct, he's directing his flow of water towards private property. Therein lies the problem. I could read you the criteria behind all of this. The criteria states that the flow of water needs to be directed to an acceptable outlet, to it, a street, an existing street, a municipal structure, a drainage easement, a creek, a ditch. It's clearly set out. Well, we want, the onus is not upon us to direct the way construction is to be done. He might also add a drainage easement on an adjacent property, for example. He could send his water through a municipal drain that runs by not too far from there. In this particular case, he could have it outflow onto Caron Street, but he'd have to raise the level of his land, of the existing property for this. What I'm asking is that, well, the town has its expert, I have my expert. I would like you to listen to our expert. I believe he could certainly explain this much better than I could. We're talking here about item 9.11? Yeah, engineering guidelines? And it seems that we've, we've entered into another subject matter altogether. This development is contained within the report that is the subject matter of item 9.11, the engineering guidelines that were called upon to adopt now? Yes. Now, Mr. Klemm, we had guidelines to approve. Well, we'll have your engineer address council, but not for too long. We have a design with the guidelines that are appropriate to the design.
You speak. I'll try and keep it quick. I think it's been summarized very well what the engineering standards are that we follow. We designed to meet the Ministry of Environment guidelines at the end of the day, which can be...
Your name, please, for the...
Sorry, Ryan Kennedy from McIntosh Perry. So we were, just to give you a background, hired by Charles to complete the engineering designs for this development. I'm very confident that we would meet the Ministry of Environment guidelines, should this receive approval from, from the city of Clarence and Rockland and proceed on to environmental compliance application approval. I can give you several examples of projects that we've completed which controlled a 100-year storm onsite, but in an emergency event such as above the 100-year storm, or, let's say, the pipe is blocked or covered with debris or something like that, would be directed to a private property. We receive those approvals all the time. It's not common. In a perfect world, the drainage would be directed towards the roadway. That would involve Mr. Klemm raising his land significantly, talking about two and a half meters, retaining wall in the backyard to make that work. If we take into account that the land currently drains there, in a 100-year storm, there's currently about 50 liters per second of water that would be directed towards that land. In post-development conditions, when we have our swale in the backyard with a pipe that soars the water, zero liters per second would be going there. So what we're really talking about, as Julian has mentioned, is the level of risk that's willing to be accepted in a major extreme event above the 100-year where flooding and other problems would be prevalent, not just in a circumvent.
Any comments, Mr. Leonard?
Well, again, like, it's just, we need to make sure that what we're, what they're talking about, when they're talking about 100-year event, is control, and they're doing that. We don't have, we don't have any issues with the way that they're controlling 100 years. It's in the event that there's anything that is in excess of 100 years, they need to direct that to a suitable outlet. They have not mentioned how they're doing that, and that's where we have an issue. And outletting it to a neighboring property is not considered a suitable outlet. So when there's, when they say that they meet the MOE requirements, they do for the controlling aspect of the requirement, but they're omitting the overland flow route part of the same requirement that they're, that they're meeting, which clearly specifies that it needs to be outletted towards a suitable outlet. So the department's recommendation, the department's role is to make sure that we look out for the city's best interest. So in this case, approving the grading as it stands is not the city's best interest, in our opinion.
Can I recommend, we've been talking about this for all time, maybe having a meeting at the city with Mr. Leonard? Mr. Klemm, maybe one or two representative from, from city council to better understand what the thing is. And if we say, no, we can't do it, then they can come to us and tell you, we listen to you. to it, we think we can go with it, or we've listened to it, and yes, we believe that council can authorize it.
We can do that. I'll gladly sit on it.
At least we can open up the discussion freely.
I gladly sit in on this. If anybody else wants to get on, you're quite welcome.
So I propose to defer this until they sit down?
Well, I think this should be approved.
Yeah.
And just go for the... Because it's an exception being asked. That's separate from this.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll organize a meeting, and we'll discuss that. For now, we'll...
I just have one question. I've got a few questions.
Now, in your report, you indicate that you entered into consultation with all developers. Nova Tech also sent a letter, I believe. Now, did you address the majority of what was contained in the Nova Tech letter, per se, those concerns or items? There are things that developers are not happy with? Because this is not included in the report. That's why I'm asking the question. Well, quickly, the purpose of this report and the two ensuing reports will be issued following meetings that we had with the developers. We also identified the need to improve the process, both of the developers and administration, to accelerate the development process. Now, the three forthcoming reports have been drafted, and will be forwarded to you for that purpose. We gathered all comments received. We stated to all those concerned that we would develop those reports, we would turn out those reports. We made developers aware of our intent. We noted down all of their comments, and I would say that the majority of their comments are part and parcel of our guidelines. They were revised by the major developers here in Clarence and Rockland, also by a consultant that was chosen by all developers to implement these documents. And also, we incorporated the majority of their recommendations in our designs and guidelines, as well as our engineering standards documents. So those engineering standards, to answer your question, all developers approved them or received the engineering standards department. In other words, the department did its homework. I believe that the department went over and above doing its homework. Counselor Gliman? Fine. Page 25, item 2.3 of the bylaw, or it states that street names should be easily pronounced, both in English or in French. I don't know if it's a new regulation, but there were some changes brought to the street called Mercury in French. The name is Mercure, and I believe that we should come up with street names that are pronounced well in English and in French. Ruby, for example, or Diamond. Diamond, of course, can be readily stated in English, but cannot be stated readily or cannot be said readily in French. I would like that priority be put on francophone street names for the city of Clarence and Rockland, in an effort. We run short of names, but there are some street names that are solely English and are hard to pronounce in French. We are a city, a francophone city. We might be sharing values that are different than the rest of the residents of Prescott-Russell. Fine, then. All those in favor? Carrie. Let's go on, then. Site Plan Control Area Bylaw and Site Plan Control Area Bylaw. Counselor Belleguet? That the draft Site Plan Process Guide and Site Plan Control Area Bylaw attached to report AME 18-39-RB received that information, and that the infrastructure and planning department be mandated to circulate the Site Plan Control Area Bylaw to the development committee for their comments, which shall be taken into consideration by council prior to the adoption of the said bylaw. Seconded by Counselor Gliman. Questions? All those in favor, then? Carrie, thank you. Process Guides for Consent Applications, Zoning and Official Plan Amendment and Applications and Minor Variants Applications. You've started up quite well, Mr. Belleguet. Go on. That the Process Guides for Consent, Minor Variants and OPZoning Bylaw Amendment attached to report AME 18-42-R be received as information. Seconded by Counselor Sima. Seconded by Counselor Sima. All those in favor? Carrie, then, thank you. Works in Progress, Completed Projects. Counselor Zant? That the list of ongoing projects or capital expenditure, project, projects, be received for information purposes?
So I was looking at... I was looking at the list for Ward 2. There's some things that are missing, so I'm not really sure how complete this list is. It doesn't have Wood Street being repaved. It doesn't have Sandy Lee being repaid. It doesn't have Gaho and Puyak, which we're starting a development this year, going into next year. So it's missing some pieces, which makes me doubt the accuracy of the report. No doubt it is a big issue trying to get all this information, and I get it, and I thank the department for doing that. I just, now I'm kind of second guessing, going, is this really what it is? Because I'm missing half the stuff.
So those streets were done under a paving program, so it didn't get... So Gaho...
Well, Gaho hasn't been repaved or yet, yet. That's not a difference.
No, so the completed list will not have projects that are not done. Okay? And those streets...
Not even if, sorry, not even if we earmarked money in this budget to start...
Well, they're not done.
No, but we're doing it in two phases.
That's only works in progress.
Okay.
So you have two lists. One are all the projects that are completed, and anything that was approved outside the budget cycle. We did our best to find all of those things. So Wood Street, I believe, was done outside the budget cycle, so we don't have to add that in. But the items that were actually approved in the budget, because that's a solid list. On occasion, council would approve a report that was an ad hoc thing, and those were harder to pick up. We picked up some of them, so it wouldn't be a lot missed.
And I don't mean to argue. I just, I do believe that Woods was approved in the budget. I believe that. I don't think it was... It also had Victoria Street as well. Victoria is on there, but it was all approved, kind of the same thing. Either way, is it okay if we just... Can I call the departments to get some data on the price that it cost to do those streets as well? Or is this report final and...
No, no, it's not final at all. So I think what we need to do is maybe go, just send me a list of the ones that are missing, and we'll either identify where they are, if they're in a group project...
But I am thankful that the report was done, so thank you.
Okay.
That's a big plus, Mr. Leonard. It wasn't me.
It was my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another one?
Take a bit of chance, man, small changes. Item number 10. It should be number one. Ward number one.
Okay.
Works in progress.
Done, works in progress?
Yeah.
That's not under two. It should be under one. And number 15 should be, should read as one and three. So I just lost where you, that place you were alluding to, or that little spot in document where you were alluding to. I'm just looking at the plan. Also, number 66, Saint Jean Street, streetlights and sidewalk. Yeah, well, that's on my side of the street. Yes. Well, maybe Counselor Lallande is right. It cuts off at Mercury. I only have three streets beneath that, as well as the pond close by. That's fine. Any other questions? Well, anyways, the report was very well drawn up. All those in favor? Carrie, then. Let's go on now to the Health and Safety Report for the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena. Counselor Lallande, I'll have you read this. Whereas a regular health and safety inspection was conducted on the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena in April 2018, and whereas the inspection identified concern with flaking paint, and whereas a follow-up inspection was conducted immediately, May 3, 2018, the document reads 2108, that's just a bit of a mistake, by an environmental specialist that identifies lead that is contained in the paint above the acceptable limit. Be it resolved that a professional engineer's report be completed to provide the necessary steps to remove the lead paint from the arena. Counselor Zant? Well, a quick one. Mr. Jubinville, do we need a professional engineering report to have us remove paint from a given wall? Well, lead is considered as a hazardous material, and to remove lead from paint, you need to follow specific procedures, and you need people competent to do so. The same principle applies to the removal of asbestos. Well, if we know all of this, do we need engineer's report to go ahead and do it? Can we just hire the services, rather, of someone who knows how to remove lead-based paint? Well, we need to have the engineer that performs the work from A to Z to be involved in this, so that all environmental stipulations or directives or specifications be followed. Engineers are called upon to supervise the work to be performed, and also to make sure that hazardous material also be removed when called to be removed. For example, today, we're talking about $6,000 to $15,000 that were awarded to us to hire a capacity, an engineer that had the necessary capacity to perform this work, to make sure that the arena be deemed safe. But I don't know. It seems to me that, well, all right, all right, all right. This is the world we live, we live in, Mr. Zant. What can I say? I know, Mr. Mayor. I don't think, oh, that, you know, common sense dictates that you don't need an engineer to hire an engineer to supervise somebody who all in turn supervises work. But at the end of the day, it has to be done properly, and it has to pass the inspection test. I'd be quite surprised if the paint in the change rooms would be lead paint. We are the ones that painted that area. Well, there was lead in all of the paint that was used to paint the interior of this venue. There are some areas where there was paint that had flaked along, you know, stairwell leading upstairs. Samples were taken of the paint, and there was lead found in the paint. It was not an inordinate amount of lead, but it was over and above the threshold. Mr. Filion, please, Londoner, maybe we can come up with people to raise funds to help us with the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena, because we won't have the funds. Do you understand what I'm getting at, Mr. Filion? I see. Well, we might take part in the fundraising procedures. You see, if you had experience in that, you'd be the person that would be properly designated for this. Mr. Mayor, we're voting $110,000 to hire firm to tell us where such and such implements are to be located within the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena. We're going to hire a firm to remove the lead paint, but we might make use of this initial $110,000 for other purposes. We might look into modifying the agreement we entered into with Grant. Well, Mr. Jubinville, did we not save $55,000 in proceeding the way we did? Yes, but we still have to pay out $110,000, which means that we are paying out an additional Well, in any event, I understand. We might substitute one lead paint by a lower content lead paint. No, 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 no. We have to go by the book. All those in favor? Carrie, then. Let's go on now to Protective Services. Counselor Gliman? Mr. Mayor, I move that report number PRO 2018-011 in regards to monthly statistics be received as information. Seconded by Counselor Belleguet. Any questions? Mr. Wilson is all ears.
Residential fires, house fires? That's not just my imagination, right?
Through the mayor, we've had a disproportionate number of fires in the last six months, structural fires in the last six months. We tend to look at those numbers over a longer period of time, because they can come in spikes and valleys.
But we are investigating anything that's suspicious.
We don't have anything to do with investigations.
We, the fire department's responsibility is to investigate cause and origin of the fire. If it is deemed suspicious, it is passed to police as a potential criminal investigation. It becomes a policing matter.
Has the investigation been completed for Edward Street?
Some samples were taken by the office of the fire marshal. I have not heard the results of those samples yet. Again, typically, if they did come back with something that was unusual, it would be forwarded on to police as it becomes a police file.
What are we finally to have this house demolished?
That is a building department matter at this point. It's no longer fire department, so it would fall to the building department to follow up under the building code. I'm sending an email tomorrow regarding another one, so I have a question.
There's more than one. Okay, still?
Other questions? All those in favor, then? Carrie, thank you. Thank you for the report, by the way. Next item, Information Report in regards to the Use of Consulting Firms. Step up, Counselor Zant. Yes, Mr. Mayor. He likes to point the finger at me, you know? He laughs and grins, and then he says, hey, I just wake you guys up. It's almost 10 o'clock. Whereas council requested staff, Mr. Mayor, to review its current consultant appointment procedures with a view to determining if cost savings can be attained through the use of existing staffing resources. And whereas the administration has reviewed the magnitude of annual capital works programs and the associated criteria utilized for the retention of external consulting services. Be resolved, council endorses the current practices used by the administration to retain required consultant services in the delivery of council's approved capital works programs Is this all, does this fall under the same category?
Is the current practice used by the administration to retain required consultant services in the delivery of the council's approved capital works program and studies?
Seconded by Counselor André Lallande. Mr. Leonard, should we have Mr. Darch speak?
They're back there to get going on this. Come on up, Mr. Darch.
Don't let him stand.
You get the honor to sit next to Mr. Kiel. If that's an honor.
No comment.
Like old times.
Go ahead.
No, we just want you to resume, basically, your report status.
Next one, nation.
I mean, I think the report speaks for itself. You know, we took a look at the practices of the municipality, and my humble opinion, I think what we're doing is probably the right mix in terms of the delivery of our capital programs and the use of consultants. As I said... As I said in the report, there's essentially two circumstances in which you go to the outside. And that's if you don't have the internal capacity. If members of council will recall back in the, I think it was the 2016 budget, we had a fairly aggressive program at that time. The staff complement, and we're talking here about the infrastructure and planning department, there's three people that delivers a capital program, and we determined what their threshold was in terms of the quantum that they could deliver. And there was a gap with the program that was being approved by council, and we asked you to approve funding for external project management services. I think that made sense at that time, because that was the blip on the screen. And then we reverted back to the point where we're on more of the average, and we were able to deliver the programs using the resources we have right now. I think the organization should always be looking at its staff complement to deliver the programs. But I think the best time to do that, quite honestly, as I've said in the report here, is at your budget time, where the department will assess the need, develop an argument through a business case, cost it out, and go forward to council. Right now, I think we have the, certainly in infrastructure and planning, you essentially, you got your manager, and then you've got two project managers. And those project managers are just that, they're project managers. They're not, they're not involved in design, they're not doing site supervision and the like. They're only handling the projects to ensure that they're delivered. So if you, if you need to get into design, if you need to get into contract administration, that, you're going to have to go to the outside for that. So that, you take a look at your internal capacity to see what you can deliver. And there usually a formula, I know I've seen it in other municipalities, where one project manager can deliver X number of million dollars. So you develop that benchmarking. The other instance though, and I think more to the point here, is that me, is where you don't have the specialized expertise. And I guess what I did, and I have to apologize, I think your report didn't pick up the administration report that we're referring to here. But that 2014-2018 summary, I took a look at that, the one that Helen had prepared, and I looked at the different disciplines that are covered in that. There's approximately 24 different disciplines that are, you require specialized services for. So I guess what I'm saying here, and I think in some instances, I've seen this in, you know, previous years with councils, an engineer is not an engineer, not an engineer. And what I mean by that, it's like a doctor. Doctors have different disciplines. You go to a chiropractor, or a heart specialist, or brain specialist, whatever. Engineering's the same. And I think the disciplines that we've listed there, they're extensive. And that was just on the four years. You can see there was 24 specialty services. The ones with the asterisk, and I focused on the infrastructure and planning because they're the biggest user of your services. So it's, when you have that variety of service demands, you know, to deliver your program, it really doesn't make sense, in my opinion, is to try to hire a staff person to deal with it. You're not going to get somebody that's going to have the breadth of expertise that you need. So I think what we're doing is the right way to approach it. Now, you need this varied expertise, you're going to need that. And that's why I went at some length when I prepared the report to talk about standing offers. I think standing offers are critical to an organization. The industry like it. I know, having worked in the consulting world for a while, standing offers were an excellent way to go. You don't have to get involved in long RFP proposals. I don't know how familiar members of council are with the RFP process, but what we should be doing, we have an RFP, a standing offer by law right now, it's probably limited in the number of services, and four to six to seven services that are in there. It's too limited. And I think there's a process that's underway right now, where we're going out to the department heads and asking them to identify service areas that we should be expanding that standing offer to. Then what you're going to do is you're going to, you're going to go out to the consultant industry, and you're going to say, the city of Clarkes Rockland is entertaining expressions of interest for the following services. And that, that industry will take a look at those services. Now, you're going to have to provide them with a rough idea of the quantum of work that's going to be involved in those. Little upfront work by the municipality, but then they will submit their corporate experience, they will submit the experience of the project managers and the key staff that will be working on projects, and they will be submitting their rates. I would argue that's a competitive process. You receive that information, you evaluate it, and you're going to shortlist four to five consultants in each one of those categories. What are the benefits of that? Why go through all that? And the benefit is, you can get your projects off the ground faster. The industry pretty likes it, because they've already submitted their RFP, you've evaluated it. So if you have a project that comes up that requires, let's say, geotechnical work, you go to a firm X, it's at the top, or the first two, and you ask them for a proposal. So they're going to give you a two, three-page proposal of their understanding of the scope of the work. They'll use their hourly rates, and as long as it's within the budget that you have, you can go ahead and you can award that. It's a much more streamlined process, and it's one that I don't think we're leveraging right now. So it is underway, as I said in the report here, in the fall of this year. I would expect the administration will bring you the results of that RFP process. And I think you're going to take a look at the rate. I know there's an upset limit right now, $50,000 for going to standing offer. I would suggest the organization might want to revisit that. I won't pass any more comment than that. But I think if you're interested in getting your projects off the ground quickly, having a competitive process, I think that's the way to go. So I think we can deal with a variety of services by optimizing the standing offer process. You're still going to have to go out for some of the bigger projects. If I look at the waste treatment plant and the like, you know, the dollar value associated with the engineering requirements, that are probably going to exceed the limit that you're going to put on standing offers. But I'll just close it off with that, if you have any questions. But that's the essence of the report, and my recommendation to you is, I think the current practices should be maintained.
You're recommending that we maintain what we do. So each project, you go, like, you know, I like to get, like, you refer to it, doctors or many specialists, but they're all in the same hospital. Isn't there an engineering firm somewhere that we can RFP or ask? Say, what do you specialize in? If it's one, two, three, four, okay, you're the same. Submit to us a package deal that, when we have a project, all we need to do is, we don't need to come and always do the same process. You can call them, say, it's been approved by council, you're on our list, we have this, this, this project for 2018. That way, I see the amounts of consulting, it's just... And I know it's hard. It's hard because they're all in different areas. But if we can find some companies that are specialized, I don't know, roads and bridges, we have two or three, we don't have, you don't have to come to us all the time. We can just...
Yeah, and just in answer to your question, I actually worked with a firm that they had a wide variety of services across the whole engineering spectrum. Now, that was across the country, but they had, they had access to those. Your standing offer process, we'll draw that out. You know, if a firm has multi-disciplines, I would be surprised. If they respond on one, more than likely, they're going to respond at any number. And I think that's the key. You want, we need more firms on that standing offer list, and be able to go to them. And all you're going to ask for is, you've already gone through your competitive process, you've shortlisted, they're just going to give you a two, three-page letter proposal based on the scope of the project you have, and get work done a lot quicker, and you can access a variety of services.
That's something that's coming to council further. Okay.
Yep.
I mean, we already have something in place like this for Lockwood.
So, I mean, this makes sense 100% to me.
Other questions? All those in favor then, carry. Do you have any questions for department heads? Councilor Sima? Mr. Leonard? Concerning the work performed on Clark Road, where are we at right now? Well, we will need to forward the report to council to identify the way we'll go about completing the work on Clark Road. Mr. Leonard? I received an email from people on Gagne Road. Remember that we'd put up a detour concerning, involving Joannis Road in relation to the ice storm that we had? That damaged Gagne Road to a certain extent. I don't know if we'll obtain money from the United Counties, because we closed down a county road, and we made use of our road for detour purposes. Could we not recoup some part of our costs from the United Counties? I know we can't rebuild a new Gagne Road, but at least increase the tonnage of gravel that can be spread over top Gagne Road. If the counties can help us out on that, it would be fine, because it's a detour we put up, we put up because of their road that had been damaged initially. Well, we'll need to definitely spend money to upgrade this road. But considering this occurred during the course of winter, and the road was not designated as a half-load roadway at that point in time, I imagine though, we could be able to recoup a part of the amount involved. You know where Gagne Road is, yes? I'm quite familiar with Gagne Road. What I'm saying is this, well, I'm not commenting on the condition of the roadway per se, but during the wintertime, the road structure is frozen, you see. Being frozen, well, you see, this is not, would have caused any damage on the road. Traffic flow would not have caused damage to the road. Any other questions? I have three questions for Mr. Jubinville. First question, the easiest to answer. Tennis facilities, the lights turn on each and every evening, you know? Rain or shine? Before putting in a box that would require people to put in a token to control the hours of lights being turned on or off, well, it's a safety-related issue. One light could be turned on instead of all lights. Mr. Jubinville? Well, we're looking into this with regard to tennis facilities in Hammond, as well as Rockland. Mechanism that people would activate, that would turn on the lights for maybe half an hour or 45 minutes. We're looking into this, but it's something that's quite expensive to implement, in any event. But we'll come up with a solution. Also, I'd asked details concerning an article that appeared in the Vision newspaper regarding the arena. People were left with the impression that if we were to keep it in the same, it's in right now, it would cost $1.9 million, the arena and the garage. No matter what work we'll put into this, the $750,000, the $500,000 additional amount, whether we do something or not, we need to repair the roof, it has to be repaired. And then the fire alarm system needs to be installed. These are all, well, the fire alarm system is already budgeted for. But everything that is outlined here does not call for any, an additional penny to be spent over and beyond what needed to be replaced, subject to decision we've taken. If we continue on with, so the $1.9 million reflected in the Vision newspaper article? Yes. Is there a question you're asking then, Councilor? Well, people are under the impression that it's going to cost ratepayers $1.9 million. The decision we've taken will cost them $1.9 million. Well, notwithstanding, there are costs associated with renovations. Well, yes, I know, notwithstanding. But even if we keep the arena open, it's not going to cost ratepayers $1.9 million. It would have cost $1.9 million regardless. This roof has been leaking for the past 10 years, and the more we wait, the more it's going to cost us. I had another question for Mr. Leonard. Leonard, not Reinhardt, but Leonard. About two months ago, Mr. Leonard, I talked about lights. 10 or so lights on Laurier Street are already burnt out. But the light at the corner of Sylvain and Heritage Streets has been burnt out since January. I was told last time around, let's wait another six weeks, because we'll start installing new lights. But there are much more than 10 burnt-out lights. If I take a look at my section, right up to Saint-Jean Street, well, everything has been earmarked for repair or replacement. The work is already underway. We could change them now, but we'll be doing the work in the next few weeks. Well, I'm entirely in agreement with what Councilor Lalonde states here, because this deals with people's safety. You know, when I hear, Councilor Lalonde, say that this has been dry-gunned since the month of January, well, you see, the process that we follow concerning this situation, when residents report burnt-out lights, it's referred to client services, and from there on in, it's referred to our attention. This is put on the list, on our to-do list, and we take action. Well, we have a whole bunch of employees that travel along that area. I work for the municipality. I don't that down, I send it to the bylaw enforcement officers. It seems to me also that firefighters go out, they see, they notice burnt-out lights. I even spoke to someone about a certain department with regards to burnt-out street line at the corner of Carreault et L'Enne, and it has still not been replaced. Well, this is a process right now that we're following. We can review the process throughout department, at the departmental level, to determine whether or not we can fine-tune the process or not. At the corner of Baseline and Canaan also, nothing has been done with regard to burnt-out lights, because this, we're dealing here directly with people's safety. So at the very minimum, we should move quickly on this. If we're talking about a light on a given street at a given intersection, then we should move quickly onto this. Well, the contract has been awarded to replace streetlights, and we'll replace those streetlights. The process is taking longer than anticipated. I understand the comments you've made today, but eventually, we'll be implementing a process that will speed up things. And maybe the contract, you might be compelled to start up work more quickly than anticipated, especially around the downtown core. On Laurier Street, there are so many lamp posts that are cut in half, sir. The Laurier Street downtown core that is housing a great deal of businesses needs to be revamped and repaired, and lights should be replaced, and light posts should be replaced. You see, we'd already dealt with this beforehand. We talked about painting street or lamp posts. It would have cost us $400,000 to $500,000. Well, from Edward Street right up to Town Hall, there are at least four posts that need to be replaced. I'm in agreement with you, totally in agreement with you, Councilor Lalonde, totally. Alright then, adjournment called? By the way, dealing with lights, on Champlain Road, I'd spoken to Yves Rousselet about this, on Champlain and Harey at the corner, we'd asked that this be looked into, because it's very dark around that area. Champlain and Harey, isn't there a lighter? No, no. We've been talking about this for over a year now, nothing's been done up to now. I see, we'll move on, move on this. There's another one, close to where Canaan is, also Champlain. Fine then, fine folks. Adjournment called at 10:17 PM.